I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, number two, open public forum, anybody that is not on the agenda wishing to speak. We'll go Cliff first. Hi Cliff. Just hold the button. There you go.
Five two seven point seven oh. Good evening, thank you very much for this opportunity again. I'm Cliff Johnson from the Cold Spring Area Historical Society and once again I want to explain that we say Cold Spring Area but that includes from farming on the northwest to Marty on the southeast, so we're not just Cold Spring as such. Three things on my mind this evening, one, if you haven't seen the wedding dress exhibit, one of our rooms, we rotate the exhibit every three or four months, we've had marching band and military and baseball. This exhibit, which is going through just the end of April, is on wedding dresses. Okay, so who hasn't seen wedding dresses? These go back, there's, well, there's one I know from 1927, there's another one that's got to be from about the same era. You've heard of flapper dresses, right? Well, it was a flapper wedding. If you know Dan's style, you have to see his psychedelic wedding tie. It's a fun exhibit to see, there's like forty wedding dresses. Related to that, our next exhibit is going to be on Century Farms, so if you've got, you know, information or articles from the Century Farm, we'd be interested. Photographs, we can scan them and they're available, you can keep your stuff. People have, like, a lot of the wedding dresses are on loan, so if you want to loan us something, that's good, but that'll be coming sometime in May. Most immediate is a week from tomorrow, they call them orphan trains. Renee Wendinger is presenting a talk on the orphan trains. I gotta believe everybody is sort of acquainted with that, but a hundred years ago, more than a hundred years ago, they would bring trains, trainloads of kids, orphans from like New York City, and they would go to homes here, out on the farm usually, I think, but it should be an interesting program. It's Wednesday, April 20th, six thirty to seven thirty, there's gonna be free treats, cookies usually, something to drink, non-alcoholic, water, coffee, that sort of thing. Let's see, oh, that will, that will be at the district education facility, just up the road a little bit. What else to say about that? Six thirty up there, forgot to mention where our museum is, it's between the pillar and the safe bank, used to be a dental office. And a lot of people have picked it up to be a really nice museum. Just mentioned those hours, Tuesday noon till five, Thursday, Friday nine in the morning till two in the afternoon. Did I make it in three minutes? Any questions, comments?
Next time you'll have to go a little short.
No?
I have no question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Cliff.
Thanks Cliff.
Have a good meeting.
Yes. You're up.
Bob Callaway, 1701 Riverland Drive in Cold Springs. I got my consultant head on tonight and I have six envelopes here for the council and for our city administrator, which I'll hand out to Bridgette before I leave, so hopefully I've got about two minutes just to tell you about another consultant job I had back in 2014 after I retired from chief and we went into a situation where our four departments and police departments were in dire need of personnel and specifically equipment. So we got together with a bunch of citizens and we formed a community and we talked to every church in the city of Atwater, we talked to every school, including elementary schools, we attended every meeting, the Rotary, Lions, et cetera, et cetera. So we covered the territory throughout the city. We had six major, correction, two major mail-in citywide, few people that were registered and voted. Long story short, we came up with a measure that allowed us to collect five cents on every ten dollar tax taxable, okay? Long story short, the first years goes by, left all the money in the bank coming through the state of California to our city's budget. The unique thing about it was it was paid out to fire and police departments. The city council could not touch one penny of these funds and it could not be audited except by the state. The amount of money that we received was put into a bank account, our first check, our total check was one million, two hundred dollars, two hundred thousand dollars. And that continued over the next years clear up to 2013. Now we're talking about a figure of twelve million dollars, five cents on every ten dollar tax deductible, or tax item. So the reason I bring it up as a consultant is that there are funds out there, I understand you're, you're working on a new, I would call it a city administration building slash police and fire or something like that. So I know that communities can get together and do this and we just happened to do it a one particular way and we had a vote, we had a ballot on the, one of the major elections, we won it and I can tell you, we won that whole vote by six votes. That was kind of close, I would think. All the pundits, of course, were telling my boss, or I should say my chief, that you can't do this, et cetera, et cetera. We had two consultants sitting at a prior meeting in 213 and they said, well, we can do this kind of a measure for you, but it only costs you sixty thousand dollars. And that's when, in my good sense, I said, well, chief, we can do this ourselves, it's just gonna take some work, and by God, we did it. So anyway, that's what I got to say tonight, there are things where you can make money for buildings, ours specifically was police and fire departments. We had a halfway decent civic center that was only about twenty-five years old. In most places, it was quite nice, in other places, we kind of, I won't go, that's another story. So anyway, I would be free, another thing, as a consultant, I'm much, I call a non-paid consultant. I have to retract by part of that story because I do accept coffee. I know somebody in this room that gave me some coffee sometimes.
All right, thank you.
All right, anybody else? Otherwise, we'll go on to number three, approval of the amended agenda. I need a motion on that. Brad makes a motion. And Mike seconded. Any discussion on it, otherwise, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Number four, consent agenda, recommendation to approve the consent agenda as presented. I need a motion on that. Make a motion. Doug makes a motion. Shannon seconded. Any discussion, otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Number five, resolution 2022-11, accepting the resignation of council member Miller. Recommendation to adopt resolution 2022-11, accepting the resignation of council member Shannon Miller, declaring a vacancy on the city council and authorizing the advertising for applications to fill the vacancy by appointment. I need a motion on that.
Well, I'm leaving no matter what you guys say, I don't have a choice.
I would make, I would make that motion as, I don't know.
I make a motion, she stays. Mike makes, Mike makes some motion.
I'm good through the rest of April, but.
I make a motion, I would accept the resignation effective April 30th.
April 30th, okay. Mike makes a motion, what a second. I'll second it. Brad seconded. Any discussion on this?
Thank you.
I want to thank you for your years of service too. And we will miss you. Any.
The city council meeting.
Yep, yep.
Oh yeah, one more, okay. We'll still miss you. Any other discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thanks Shannon.
Thank you.
Number six, finance plan review for the 2022A taxable bonds and resolution approving the issuance. Jessica Green.
Mayor, council, good evening. We have a couple of items in your packet tonight related to the city's upcoming issuance of taxable general obligation sewer revenue will be considered Series 2022A for the city and the proceeds of the bonds will be used to finance the new pre-treatment facility. So we have a finance list in your packet and then we also have a parameters resolution to consider. So if you're comfortable, we'll go through that finance plan first and then we can decide on the other. So I will direct your attention, it's listed as page two in that finance plan. So again, there's a, there's an executive summary there on page two and we'll be looking at sort of the high level detail there in the plan. The purpose is stated at the very top there, being that the cost of the bond will be used for the construction of that industrial maintenance facility for the brewery and then the bond will also be sized to pay the cost of issuance as well. Security here, the bonds will be considered a general obligation of the city, so the city will be pledging the net revenues of the sewer system and then, of course, that general obligation pledge essentially backs up the payment and we'll talk a little bit more about the payment in just a moment. In terms of the repayment, looking at, starting February 1 of '24 through '42, so it's a nineteen year structure, and interest on the bonds begins being payable on February 1 of '23 and then semi-annually thereafter. The estimated interest rate here, average coupon, we're estimating 3.84% and the true interest cost is currently estimated at 3.95%. Now, the rates here are based on rates when the finance plan was drafted on April 4th plus a 25 basis point cushion. Now, I'm sure if you've turned on the TV or the radio or looked at a newspaper recently, you've liked, been seeing that there's a lot of volatility in the market. To sort of manage expectations, we would anticipate that we're gonna continue to see interest rates creep up over the next couple of weeks by the time we get around to issuing the bonds. So while we have a little bit of a cushion there and those estimated rates, we would imagine those to go up a bit from where we're estimating.
Jess, can you bring the microphone closer in, and into it, please, thanks.
In terms of the prepayment option, so at the point you'd be able to call in the bonds early for either restructuring, paying them down, or refunding, that would be beginning February 1 of 2030. We will be seeking a rating for this issue with S&amp;P, that has been scheduled now, I believe it is April 25th. We've also sought the credit enhancement through Minnesota Public Facilities Authority. We did hear back from them on Monday that the city has been approved for that credit enhancement, so that'll be a really positive thing for the bonds, being that that credit enhancement essentially provides a credit wrap for the bonds. The PFA's program is rated AAA by Standard and Poor's. The city's last rating was, came back from S&amp;P at A+. So with that, when we go to issue the bonds, the bonds won't trade as an A+ or a AAA, it'll be somewhere in the middle of that, but essentially what that allows for is because we've got that credit enhancement, it drives down the interest rate and the cost to the city on the bonds, and then it also allows for the bonds to be more attractive to investors because that credit enhancement does allow for PFA to make the payment if the city is unable to do so. So it just adds some additional interest for the bonds. In terms of the tax status, these bonds will be issued as taxable and also non-bank qualified and this is due to the fact that a private entity is going to be paying the city to make the payment here. So as I mentioned at the top when we were discussing security, being that these bonds are a general obligation of the city, we still need to pledge the net revenues of the utility itself, however, it will be offset by those payments that we will be getting from that private entity. So not looking to have any sort of increase on the rate payers due to this project. Type of bond sale here is proposed to be negotiated. Pricing date is scheduled currently for Tuesday, May 10th in the morning and then we come back before council that evening at six thirty for your consideration of the award of the bonds. On the next page, there's some additional information, you'll see the sources and uses here, so again, approximate size of the bonds here is 22,75,000 dollars. That allows for the deposit to construction fund to complete the project of 21,785,500. Those amounts will be updated once we actually have the bids in, so these are based on the project estimates as we know them now. Again, the bonds will be structured so that cost of issuance will be covered within the issue itself, and then there's a small amount of rounding there. Rounding comes back to the city at closing and that's just due to the fact that bonds are sold in $5,000 denominations. You've got the borrowing authority listed here under chapters 444 and 475. And then, just another note here towards the bottom of the page, and you'll see this called out in that second paragraph under where it discusses utility revenues. So the city does anticipate utilizing payments from Brentwood Investment Group to offset and eliminate funds from the sewer utility for the debt service on these bonds. So again, not looking to add any additional debt service, that rate payers as a whole for the city would be responsible. On page four, at the bottom here, you'll see the various individuals that will be involved in this transaction, so Northland will be serving as underwriter for the bonds. In terms of bond council, we'll be working with Freiberger as they've served as bond council for the city in the past, and then paying agent is proposed to be Northland Trust Services as they've acted as paying agent for the city for previous bond issues. You've got your preliminary debt service schedule on page five. So right around 1.65 million on average, again, we're, we would anticipate that that's gonna tick up again a bit just based on interest rates continuing to increase over time and we would imagine that that's going to continue to occur through when we are proposing to sell the bonds on May 10th. And then some related considerations, the bond will not be bank qualified, concerns over arbitrage, being that bonds are taxable on full continuing disclosure for these bonds, this is essentially being that the city already has over 10 million dollars in debt outstanding, you are already subject to full disclosure, and what that means is that you're allowing investors to readily access your, your annual audits, financials, that you're reporting material events, those types of things. Premium is mentioned towards the bottom of page six. I believe that the council is familiar with this term as we've seen this with other bond issues, but premium is what occurs when investors are willing to give you cash upfront in exchange for a higher interest rate on the bonds. What you do then, of course, is you downsize the bond, so you pay a little bit more in interest, but you're paying less in principal, so we may see premium come in with the bid for these bonds. Another note about the rating is found on page seven, again, we will be seeking a rating from S&amp;P, the credit enhancement has been approved at this point by PFA. And then finally, you have a proposed issuance calendar here. So here tonight to discuss the finance plan and the parameters resolution, we'll be looking at April 25th to hold that rating call and hoping to see that rating come back by May 2nd. Bond council will be sending the awarding resolution to the city on May 4th, looking at that premium on May 2nd and that would allow for proceeds to be available to the city for construction of the project beginning June 8th. Any questions here that I can answer on the finance plan?
Yeah, I got one. So we will receive payment and then the payment, what payment will be due, it's not the city making a payment first and then collecting the revenue from the third party?
Right, what they anticipate is they would like us once we have it all set and we know what each year's interest is, they will be paying us on a monthly basis as part of their bill, so they'll give us the first six months, in that first six months, we'll make the payment in July, I think, right? Is it August, August and February? I can't remember what our.
I think your first payment, I believe, is due 2/1 of '23.
Yeah, so we'll get that first, we'll start billing them starting in July of this year for their share of that interest for six months of interest and then we'll bill them again, so yes. And they want it broken out as a monthly, they're gonna have it as a line item on their monthly bill. So we will have the money in hand when it's due.
Mike, I just think it's important that we can understand the purpose that the private entity is paying, the interest is included.
Right.
The debt service is paid for.
Yep, 100% of it will be paid for them, so the first one will just be the interest, so obviously that'll be the smaller amount, and then once the principal starts being paid, it'll be broken out into twelve equal payments and we'll get them for six months, then we'll pay, then we'll get a new six months, and then we'll pay. So, yes, the brewery's parent company will be paying that off.
Anything else? Go ahead.
So then, for your consideration, we have a parameters resolution. What this resolution allows for is the flexibility in the timing of the bond. So currently, we are looking at May 10th to hold that pricing that long. Now, one of the things that we've been talking about is if there is a lot of other Minnesota issues that day or if it just seems to be a wonky time in the market, given the Fed meeting the week before, et cetera, that we have some flexibility to move the bond sale off by a day or two or even to the following week. This resolution allows for the mayor and the city administrator to sign the bond purchase agreement, subject to the, essentially the pricing to fall within the parameters that are identified in the resolution that council would adopt. So we've left essentially the true interest cost piece here blank. What we've filled in for the not to exceed amount for the bond is 24 million, and that number likely looks familiar to you, that was the number that we also included in that PFA credit enhancement application, just being that we don't have the bids back yet for the project. So we've allowed for some flexibility there in that upward amount of the bond, but then what we would need to do is get some feedback from the council as to what that threshold would be for the upward amount of the true interest cost. So in your finance plan, the estimated true interest cost, which did include a 25 basis point cushion as of April 4th, was 3.95%. So as the underwriter on the bonds, we can't give you a recommended true interest cost and how you set that, what we can say is that we would encourage you to consider some flexibility in that true interest cost, being that, again, we are in a very volatile market at this point. So for example, if we were to say, okay, what we're estimating is 3.95, if we set it at 4.50 and the bid comes in at 4.51, we're not able to use the parameters resolution and certainly not suggesting that you set it at 4.50, just to give an example, if we even go a touch over, then we can't use the parameters resolution. Now, that's not the worst thing in the world. So if we were gonna price the week after, so if we look at, say, if we're considering May 10th as the sale date and if for some reason we want to scoot that bond sale out a bit and say we price on the 17th, but we don't have a parameters resolution that allows for us to move forward, we would simply say, okay, we're not going to use the parameters resolution, but then what our option is, is to wait until the next regularly scheduled council meeting that would occur on the 24th of May. So, again, the parameters is meant to provide some flexibility if the council wants to preserve that provision. If you say, no Jess, we're either gonna price on the 10th or we're gonna price on the 24th, then we don't need to have the parameters, but given, again, the volatility in the market, we're seeing a lot of issuers utilize the parameters resolution, which will allow you to float with the market if you need to. Are there any questions that I can answer on the parameters resolution?
Then once we, the council agrees to it at that point in time, from there on, the percent can't change anymore?
Correct, yes. So if, let's just say that we were gonna price on the 11th of May. The, and we're within the parameters that are defined in the resolution, the mayor and the city administrator would have the ability to sign the bond purchase agreement, which would lock the rate at that time, and then we'd come back before council for a concurring resolution, just so that everyone is able to see the results of the bond sale and get all of the details, but we would come back at the next regularly scheduled meeting, which would be the 24th.
From that point on, it can't be changed?
Correct, yes.
Any other questions?
So it has to be high enough to attract it, but, but.
No, so, well, yes and no. So the bonds are going to be sold in an arms-length transaction, so it's whatever is happening in the market that day and during that order period. But certainly because we're seeing this volatility, because we know that we have a Fed meeting coming up on the 5th and the 6th of May and that we're likely to see a Fed raise at that point, we're imagining that we're going to see interest rates continue to go up. So if we would have sold the bonds on April 4th, we would have been somewhere in the neighborhood of four, or excuse me, 3.7%, so, because we added that 25 basis point cushion, but we don't know where we're gonna be on the 10th of May. So we just want to allow for enough movement in the market as a whole, not necessarily to attract a certain investor, but again, it's that arms-length transaction, so it's gonna be whatever the market is dictating at that time, but you just want to make sure that we're looking at, and not that anyone has a crystal ball, of course not, but where the market is currently and where we could imagine it to go in the next month or so.
So the goal is, is to provide.
So the goal is to provide an interest rate that we hope it will be less than.
Correct.
So that our parameters resolution still allows the mayor and the city administrator to sign the necessary documents to keep moving forward rather than hold off till the next council meeting?
Correct. Exactly right.
Okay.
But if it's on the 10th and we don't have one and we're fine with it, we don't need the parameters. This is just in case. The 10th is a wonky day, but the 11th gives us great numbers.
Right, right.
So I invest municipal bonds as I got older. That's what this is?
Correct.
And I was told that that's, right now, municipal bonds is the safest thing to, they don't pay out as much, but it's the safest thing to invest in. Does that make sense or not?
I would say that municipal, municipal bonds are a very safe investment. These bonds will pay out a little bit higher because they're taxable bonds rather than tax exempt. But these bonds are very secure. You have the general obligation pledge of the city, you have the net utility revenues of the sewer utility, and then you have the PFA credit enhancement. And that's all after considering the, essentially, the guarantee, like, right, to make the payment on the bond. So.
So it's also the safest, but also takes the longest to publish a manual or make some.
Sure, depending on where you fall. So in, in the bond structure itself, so it's a 19-year structure. If you were to call your investment person and say, hey, I'd like to purchase the 2024 maturity of the bonds, you'd get paid back sooner. But if you're looking at purchasing, let's just say it's a 2042 maturity, then yes, you're going to wait a little, little bit longer to get your money back.
Yeah, because he was telling me that.
So we, so there's a cushion that stated at 25 basis points. So that was as of April 4th. And I will tell you that in each weekday, so when the sort of market data comes out, we've seen increases sort of notch up each day. Sometimes that's 10 basis points, sometimes it's 2 or 3. And sometimes it's only affecting a certain point in the curve, so the early years rather than the later years. I would say on an average, we've likely eaten into that 25 basis point cushion at this point. There's a lot of market speculation that when the Fed meets on the 5th and the 6th, that they're likely going to be looking at a 50 basis point increase, while some people would say maybe that's closer to 25. But a lot of, there's a lot of speculation that it's at the larger end. Now, we do imagine that the, that the market has sort of baked that in already, that they're anticipating that increase. But then what happens is once the Fed meets and depending on what their comments are after that meeting, is then the market starts to speculate, okay, well, what happens at the next meeting? And then you start seeing, again, some, some increases there and just general volatility. So.
So you don't.
I think the number should be maybe a little bit higher than 3.95. It's just a matter of what you guys want, what you're comfortable.
I mean, is 4.25 too much?
Seems pretty high to me.
4.2.
But it gives you a lot of space. How much will the buyers know about the not to exceed number? Will that be disclosed?
Nothing.
So the buyers won't know it when they're negotiating?
Buyers won't know it. It's not disclosed to our desk either. So this is for myself and the analyst that's working on the deal to know, do we, once we get the feedback from the desk and they tell us, here's the scale that we're proposing. And I don't believe that this is mentioned in the finance plan, but we will also have a separate firm that's reviewing the scale that's proposed by the desk as well, for fairness. So even though federal regulations require us to deal fairly and do that arms-length transaction, we also have another firm that is active in the market to review the scale and say, yes, this is a fair deal for the city. So there's some checks and balances in there. That being said, the information that is in the parameters resolution is not shared with either of those parties. They are dealing with what the market is providing at that date and time. This simply provides our team, the public finance team, with the ability to say, okay, based on that feedback from the desk, we are outside of what the parameters resolution allows us to do, and therefore, we need to wait until the next council meeting.
Okay, so if we do a 4.20 and it comes back at 4.25, then we don't do anything?
Correct. Till the 24th.
Till the 20, but then it could go up even higher, right?
Correct.
But it could, if you go 4.2, 4.25, and it comes back at 4.1, it's fine. Then we would fill it.
Correct.
Well, I would think 4.5 would be a reasonable number. Just to start the discussion, I guess.
That's kind of where I was.
I can't imagine it going any lower. So I mean, it's.
Kind of where I was thinking.
I always think in 4.25, because if it comes in at 4.2, I mean, or 4.21.
If it comes out, yeah, if it comes in at 4.21.
Or how would we like exactly on?
And then it could go up to 4.5.
Or unless.
Hope not, but it could.
It could. Yeah, I mean.
Well, and the other option too, not to, so.
Could you have an emergency council meeting?
We could do a special. So if we're getting to, because we'll start the process with reviewing, providing the fairness opinion, we'll start that the Friday before. So that would be on the 6th, might even be that Thursday before. So if we're looking like we're above that, I mean, and throughout the process, Bridget and I will be in conversation about, this is where it's looking. If we needed to pull everyone together, we could do that to either do a new parameters or maybe we're, you know, saying, all right, let's just step back and wait for the next council meeting. We can certainly do that, too. But yeah, that would be the other option is getting another meeting scheduled to consider the sale.
Yes, that's what I was kind of looking at, too. It was a 4.25. I don't know. What do you guys think? Are we too high?
Well, I don't think that, I don't know if the interest rate would go lower, but I don't know.
Yeah, I'm, 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 it's, I'm thinking we're a little high, but, you know.
It's not that we're dead.
I watch the stocks every day and it's so volatile and boy, we could get caught if we don't give ourselves some leeway and.
Yeah.
You know, it's a hard decision. He can say yeah and then, or no, and then bite yourself later. So I'm okay with 4.25.
Does someone want to make a motion to have that?
I'll move for what you said, 4.25.
I'll second that.
Mike makes a motion. Shannon seconds it. Any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Against, motion carries.
Okay. Thank you very much.
4.25. Now you need a motion on the resolution itself.
Now, we need the recommendation down here?
Yep.
Okay. Recommendation to approve resolution number 2022-10, a resolution approving the issuance of a taxable general obligations sewer revenue bonds, series 2022A. I need a motion on that.
I'll make that motion.
Mike makes a motion. How about a second?
I'll second it.
Doug seconds it. Any discussion on it? Doug?
On the bottom of the resolution, if I, is this the one that was sent to us, the date of March 22nd?
Yep, it should say April.
It should be April 12th.
Yep. I can fix that in.
Okay.
Would that change all? You know, Mike, second.
All right.
It goes down to two.
Any other, any other discussion? Otherwise, all of the favors, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
All right, number eight, Public Works Director report, John Stevie, along with Brian Lynch. Hi, John.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. First thing I have on my report tonight is the tank and tower cleanings for North South Tower and Ground Storage. Pretty straightforward, went out for estimates. Midco is the only company that does diving, so tough to get multiple estimates on it, but if you want to go ahead and read the recommendation.
All right, I'll do that. Recommendation to approve the tower cleaning and inspection by Midco Diving and Marine at a cost of $8,267. And furthermore, to be paid out of water budget line item tank cleaning, 6812. I need a motion on that.
I'll make a motion.
Shannon makes a motion. How about a second?
I'll check it in.
Fran seconds it. Any discussion on it?
No.
Otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Second item on my gen, on my report is the request to repair tubing for the boiler at wastewater. I don't really know what you want to talk about with that, but all the tubing inside the boilers is going bad, so we need to repair it.
Okay. Recommendation to approve repairing the boiler tubing by Twin Cities Boiler Repair at a cost of $8,650. And furthermore, to be paid out of sewer budget repairs and upkeep line, 6313. I need a motion on that.
I'll make that.
Fran makes a motion. How about a second?
Second it.
Doug seconds it. Any discussion on it?
No.
Otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Just some updates. The fishing pier is complete. We're just waiting for a time to put it into the river. As you can see, the street sweeper's been out. Majority of the town's done already. The air patcher's out as well. Shirley Welter met with me last week. She's meeting with the watering committee tomorrow morning, showing them how to run the machine and how to water the flowers. One thing I wanted to bring up to you guys was Thompson's is requesting we lower our flower pots, like 18 inches from where they're hanging now. It's not possible to do that with the current bracket system we have without putting a cable and just hanging them on a cable. I'm not in favor of that. I think they're up there for a reason so that they don't get damaged. But I wanted to run it by you guys.
Why do they?
Why?
Yeah.
Multiple reasons. Number one is it's, it's a, the lower, if they're a little bit lower, they're more in the line of sight and they're going to look better. And the other thing was the height of them now and the wind and sunlight is harder on the plants.
It's closer to the sun.
So I, I don't know.
By what, 12 inches?
I mean, yeah, 18 inches they want to lower them, but I, I look at it as, you know, we, we put them at that height from the beginning for a reason. And we never had any vandalism on our pots because you can't reach them, so I like that.
That's why we, that's why we put them up that high. I remember when, when we discussed that one.
Yeah, so.
I think they're fine.
Just wanted to run it by you guys, but my plan is just to leave them the way they are.
They're staying up there.
If they can be watered, they're fine.
Yeah. Yeah, we have a watering wand long enough to water them, so.
We like them up there.
I just like them to maybe, if they can water them a little bit, like, because I think they'll be able to water them a little bit more this season and maybe fertilize them.
Yeah, we, and we put fertilizer in the water. It sounds like they're going to be watered daily.
Which will be good.
She's got a committee together that's going to have it.
That'll be much better. So they will bloom a little bit better.
And grow longer.
Yes.
And hopefully, hopefully we have more rain this year.
More growth over.
Yep.
Last year was a really bad year. I mean, they would have had to be watered three times a day almost, just because of the heat and the dry.
Yep.
Splash pad, we're just preparing that for a Memorial Day opening. Doing some repairs from the vandalism we had last fall. Two changing tables in each bathroom were demolished and they're like $1,200 apiece to replace, so we had a drain tube from the roof freeze as well. We had to replace that as well. But other than that, we'll just be prepping that and getting that ready to rip for the next few weeks here. That's all I got.
I have a question.
Mike?
A maintenance question. That area down by Speedway and Holiday along, is that, whose responsibility is that to maintain? Is that ours or is that theirs?
On Highway 23?
No, on Red River.
That'd be us.
Where the railing is and.
Uh, well, no, the, the, the plants and stuff.
Right.
Well, that was kind of the business owner's responsibility to maintain what's in front of their business like a boulevard, mowing grass and stuff. I believe last fall, we took the plants out of there and put rock in.
In some areas.
Yeah.
But there's still areas.
Usually Holiday does a pretty good job cleaning their, their weeds. I know the other side of the road, it wasn't quite that way, so we put rock in.
Well, the area between the trail and Speedway, that's still got grasses in it.
Yep. Um, no, we are, we mow that.
No, between the trail and the speed, the second Speedway entrance.
So that'd be winters, probably?
In between the two entrances?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a little strip by the trail that we mow, but then they mow, they're supposed to mow and maintain.
But I mean, the plants and stuff that are in there, I mean, they're full of garbage and debris. Is that, if that's their responsibility, we should send them a letter or something or if it's.
Yeah. I think, didn't we replace the rock in front of Speedway last year? We took the plants out and put rock in?
I don't, I don't.
I think he's talking.
Angie was talking about she would go down there during lunch break and.
Well, we'll see. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's theirs, so we're going to send them letters and remind them. But I think you're talking about further up the boulevard, south of, you know, where that mound rock that we mow?
Yeah.
That's Speedway, and I'll send them a letter.
Yeah.
Yep, they get, if it gets over, clean it up because it's nuisance, so they'll get that letter. Then if it gets too high, they'll get the, cut your too-high letter.
Well, it's just that it's all full of garbage.
Yep. They'll get that now since it's, everything's melted and we now see the garbage.
Do we wash those monuments, those granite things? That's just, they just take away their, because they're dirty or just.
We've never washed them or nothing.
We never washed them.
No, I guess.
And there's no intentions of washing them either.
Not as of, yeah, there hasn't been.
Okay.
I mean, at least they're getting like.
Are they dirty?
Can't imagine that they're.
They're full of, that went down by the bank, the community bank, they're really dirty and stuff and, you know, somebody just told me that, that we ask if we wash.
We can check them out.
Pressure wash, yeah.
Check them out and see if pressure washing would take care of it if they need something with a.
The thunderstorm?
I don't know if the ones by.
Community bank.
Community bank, that might be them that's on their side.
It would be their responsibility to wash them.
I think they're on their property, not in the right of way, like the ones on Red River.
And you're on it.
We'll have to keep it on.
Had three applications or two returning part-timer and then one more application
for part-time help, so still one more vacant spot potentially to fill. No other applications at this point.
I got one, one thing. Dog park. Somebody asked me on Saturday at the showcase about dog park, and I said I talked to somebody about it.
Yeah, within the next two meetings, you're going to have a quote for offense if you want to approve or disprove.
Okay.
I got a, I'm assuming with the price of steel and everything else in the world, it's going to be more money, but.
Mm-hmm.
We'll see. The concrete for the hockey rink hasn't been good yet.
I heard that one was outrageous, still is.
Yeah, I just actually, they were pouring concrete at Vicnealin Lane yesterday and it'll be back tomorrow when it stops raining. And I asked those guys if they'd be interested in bidding it too, so they're, they're going to get me a number on it and.
Okay.
Just keep reaching out to people that are willing to throw a number at it, but.
Yeah. All right. No, just ask them that question. All right, thank you.
Number, number nine, city engineer report, Brian Lynch.
Mr. Mayor and Council, good evening.
Hi.
Start with the twenty-twenty-one brewery sanitary and water main improvements. I think you saw in the packet, we have change order number one, so this is for the work that we did last fall, that, yeah, kind of late summer and fall. Being that we rerouted where the sewer goes, originally, we were looking to go through the golf course and some other areas, we had difficulties with easements. With that, we obtained some more easements from the Recore School District, rerouted where, how our sewer was working. Took the the lift station that was going to go by the golf course driveway, basically moved that to behind Fifth Avenue. And then added another lift station by the community garden on the west side of County Road Two. We put in two new crossings of County Road Two, but that enabled us to continue using all of the infrastructure that we already had in place for the sewer. And then also avoid the water because you need to have certain distances from the water in the sewer. So that, you know, kind of the summary of of the big things that we changed, you know, new lift sta- or move a lift station and modify it. Add a completely new lift station and then those two road crossings were the big items. And then that brings the sewage from Plant B or the distribution center, gravity, down to the community garden lift station, which is Lift Station B. From there, it gets pumped to the backside of Plant A or the downtown brewery, which is Lift Station A. And then from there, it's going to continue on this year's project, down Fifth Avenue, down Second, over the river and to the treatment plant. So those were the changes that we had in the contract. I laid it out, the change order itself is the one point six million, but in reality, there's seven hundred and thirty-five thousand that we're not spending that was in the original contract. So it really comes to a, the net hit on the the bottom line of the contract is the eight hundred and seventy-five thousand. And as a reminder, again, similar to the industrial pretreatment, this is a brewery-funded project, it's, this is the collection system to bring all of their waste, keep it in a dedicated system. Because we can't mix that waste with municipal waste for the plant, so we had to create this dedicated system to bring their, you know, high sugar, high alcohol waste to the industrial pretreatment. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on it.
Brian, one of the reasons that we had this switch is because we didn't have to buy the easement across the golf course is why we switched this, correct?
All right, I'll read that recommendation then. Okay. To approve change order number, to, to approve change order number one for the brewery sanitary sewer and water main improvements project, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Fran makes a motion, how about a second?
I'll second.
Mike seconds it, any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
All right, thank you.
One thing I wanted to bring your attention to in the bills on Friday, today's new supplemental revises what we're paying to C and L for this change order. Because they haven't completed all the work, we we thought since it was last year's work and we got the change order, we were going to pay them the whole thing, but we realized they haven't done all the work. So we're only paying them what they've done so far related to this change order. So you have a revised bill in front of you on the new supplemental.
All right. Otherwise, we'll, on that project, we're just going to be addressing some of the erosion control and seeding here this spring as things thaw. We also have a little bit more work to cut in on Fifth Avenue behind the brewery, so we'll be coordinating with them on that. And then it's really working on the lift stations themselves, getting the pumps installed, getting the electrical, the panels, concrete around them, all of that other work, so. They put the bulk of the, the digging was done last fall and now is all the cleanup and finish work.
When is this, that street going to get tore up then, do you know about?
Fifth, we don't, I don't have a schedule on that yet, I, they've told me mid-May, as soon as the Batuminis plant's open. Because if we, if we cut it open, we want to be able to patch it back in right away.
And then down past, Mike is about the same time then, or?
No, that one's going to be mid to late summer.
Oh.
So we're still in design on that.
Okay.
We've gotten most of the soil borings, we have to get the ones by the river for the bridge piers. We did, we got some tree trimming done, we got the power line shut down and then it started raining. And then they couldn't, they were, basically got the trucks stuck and so we're going to be coming back with an off-road rig for those because they couldn't, they thought they could make it and then we got a little unlucky with with the weather. So working on, right now on the design for for those sections, as soon as I get the soil borings this week, then I can start laying out a little better the path that that pipe is going to take.
Okay. Mike?
On the west side of, on Second, Second Avenue or Second Street North, on the west side of Red River. Are you going to do that in a separate section than that on the east side?
The intention is to drill, to use a directional drill to get under Red River.
You're going to tear up the road and do that, pave it over first before you go to the next side?
That's probably going to be up to the contractor how they sequence it, but I'm guessing they're just going to prob- if it were me, I'd start it at Fifth Avenue and I'd work my way east. So likely, they might both be tore open at the same time.
Okay. Well, the question I have is about the sidewalk there. That's lived its life and I guess our experience is we don't repair sidewalks until we do a road over, isn't that usually the way it goes?
Yeah, typically would be.
But those sidewalks between Red River and Fifth, that would mean they'd have to wait another twenty years to get that sidewalk fixed?
Potentially, yes, you know, unless there were issues with it in between, I don't know what our policy is if if a panel goes bad or there's issues.
Well, it's deteriorated, both sides of the street there are in bad shape, I mean, is it possible to incorporate repairing that at the same time?
We absolutely could incorporate it at the same time, it would be something though, I think that would be probably a city cost and not a brewery cost. So if it's something we'd be willing to entertain it, it certainly would be a time, you know, the time to do it if you wanted to, but it, we would have to be willing to pay for it.
And it would not be assessable, we'd have to have a feasibility stud- an assessment hearing on it, we couldn't just do it.
Yeah.
We'd have to have an assessment hearing.
Right, I understand that.
If we were to assess it, I think we'd almost have to have it as a separate project because we've, we've started down the process.
We wouldn't want to do that as a separate project after the new tar goes in.
No.
No, because you, I would also recommend you'd replace the curb line if you're going to do the sidewalk because they kind of go hand in hand.
Yeah, it, absolutely.
Well, maybe we could, maybe could we get an estimate of what that might cost?
It'd be easy to estimate what that would cost, yes.
But then you'd, we'd have to do an assessment hearing and everything then?
You'd have to do.
But there'd be time.
Public hearing.
Well, it would have to be a separate project to do that and that, that's where it might be.
Yeah.
Tough because, because we're going to replace the street with the pipe project, you know, the pavement in the street. But if we have to try and coordinate the two, it could get a little tougher because you don't want to pave your street and then come in and do curb.
Correct.
So you got to get. It makes sense to do it all at once. I don't know, I mean, that sidewalk is used a lot actually, not just by me, but you know, when there's parades, when St. Boniface has their parade and stuff, it's a.
I think what we'd have to consider is doing an assessment project, there are additional costs because there is the feasibility report, there's other things that have to happen with it. And all of the, you know, the administration time, every, everything to administer assessments, so I think what, you know, we can, we can certainly get a cost on what the construction would be. I think we'd have to think about, is it worth assessing it for the, because that would be a sixty-five, thirty-five, correct? Is it, is that thirty-five percent that we would get from the homeowners, is that worth all of the other additional costs and things to do it as an assessment?
I agree, probably not.
And depending on how many homeowners, then if that road gets done in twenty years or even in five years, we can't reassess them for that sidewalk.
Or curb.
Or curb.
But if they damage it during, I mean, if they would damage it while they were digging the pipe and it wasn't stable ground and the sidewalk and stuff would cave in, would they be responsible then?
We would pay, yeah, the contract, our contract, we would end up paying them to do it because it's part of the project. But that would get paid out of the, out of the other prod- the pipe project because then it was caused by the putting pipe in, but you would only repair that one piece.
But you couldn't do it all at the same time. But just remember, that street.
You do, you do that, everybody else doesn't do that.
That street wants it.
Yep.
I don't want to pay for it up there either, so that's the only thing you got to worry about.
And that's general fund, that's levy money, that's not, it doesn't have its own.
We don't know it. It's, it's.
Enterprise fund.
Now's the time to do it, I get that, but we got to also, don't want to open up a can of worms either. But those curbs are bad too.
We could.
It's the sidewalk, it's the curbs too.
We could hold, have them hold up on, on the asphalt until we get everything done, can't we?
I think as long, it would be feasible to do that as long as we're not delaying them too much.
Yeah.
If we're causing them too much issue, then.
Yeah.
And you're probably going to get better removal pricing if you get included all in a one, while the back was their moving tar.
Oh, yeah.
But I mean, as far as replacement cost, you're not going to get any better pricing with the project because that's the only concrete on the project if we would do that, so. The rest is pretty much just gravel and Batuminis and pipe.
Unless you put asphalt on.
What's that?
Make asphalt sidewalk.
Yeah. That ain't happening.
But yeah, that would be a good idea to at least look into.
Yeah, I can get a cost estimate on it, that'd be pretty simple.
Thank you.
Let me make a note so I don't forget. The standpipe water tower, they're going to be, they've graded it for the footing today. They're going to be digging in some of the water main tomorrow, so over the next week or two, they're going to start getting ready to pour the footing for that. We're still waiting to hear back exactly when the steel. So they're trying to get, trying to get the first ring of steel to start because that gets cast into some of the concrete. So that can start curing while they wait for the others, so, but things are moving on it.
Can we put our logo on that?
We're not.
That's something we want to do?
How tall is that again?
Eighty-three, eighty-three feet.
How tall are their towers?
Do you want to sell naming right or logo right?
So it's about halfway up.
So it'll be fourteen-foot diameter.
How much, how much would that be?
We could get an estimate for next year's budget.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea.
Be something we'd paint on afterwards.
Yeah, yeah.
Do they, do they put it on after?
Yeah. Even on a water tower, they'll, you know.
Yeah.
Construct the whole thing.
But if this is like a harvest or a lot of times, they'll put that on the board and pull that panel on.
Yeah, that's true. I don't know.
Yeah, I would say with the way lead times and things are right now, I'd say we don't want to add anything special to our work.
But we could always do that later too, I mean.
Next year.
That would be a worse thing to do either, is put that logo on later. I was just thinking that, that's what.
No, yeah, and I don't, I don't know why, I don't know what they're charging for that either. But yeah, right now, I don't need, I can ask, but I don't think.
No, we don't need to lay it on our work. Maybe get something. 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 He should at least get a place on. Something. 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 Um, otherwise, just going down the list, First Street South, we'll be doing, once the grass starts germinating, we'll be in there looking for areas that need touch up.
We were going to do that last year, but delayed it because of the drought, so hopefully we have a nice spring to get some, some good germination in there. There's going to be a little bit of work to do after, a couple of spots. We're going to go out. We're going to try to just finish out where this, where we're putting, we were visiting the pasture and we should be about it out there. Water plant, we're going on the roof, I haven't been out there, but we can have to there. And then the industrial pretreatment, we talked quite a bit about financing tonight. We talked today, we're going to move our bid date back. And so the idea was to try and put some additional time between that last bid and our bid so that contractors really have a chance to look at it closely. Other than that, we anticipate bringing it to you on May tenth. That's all I had.
We got anything for Brian? Just thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Safe City? Did you see that on the internet last night?
I haven't seen an updated one, no, but I think we were right in that area.
Number seven?
Nice. Yeah, I haven't seen that this year. Last year, we were right in that ballpark too, so yeah, no, we try and do our best. Thank you. Mr. Mayor. Uh, just some updates to start with, in March, we had two hundred and seventy-two total incidents in cold spring, thirty-one medicals, twelve suspicious activities, one hundred and one traffic stops with twenty-one citations? And a hundred and eighty-eight miscellaneous calls for service in March. In Richmond, we had, those are supposed to be twenty-twenty-two, not twenty-twenty-one, I'm just noticing that now. In Richmond, we had ninety-six total incidents, five medical emergencies, five suspicious activities, forty-three traffic stops with ten citations, and then forty-three miscellaneous calls for service. Next is, we ordered a squad car last November, originally, they told us it was going to be here mid-January, then they told us mid-April, now they're telling us, we'll get back to you, so. They're waiting, my understanding is they're waiting on a microchip, and it's just the supply of those microchips is what they're having a hard time coming across. So when that microchip comes in, we'll get our squad, but I'd like to order the equipment for the squad, so when the squad gets here, be able to move forward and get everything installed. All right.
I'll leave your recommendation to approve the purchase of the equipment for the twenty-twenty-two police squad from the- from RWB Emergency Lighting? In the amount of seven thousand five hundred and fifty dollars and furthermore, to be paid. Budget line item sixty-four. Random expulsion, hold on a second, I'll second to any discussion. Shannon.
I think it's supposed to be seven thousand fifty-seven and fifty cents.
I think she missed it, there was a typo, missed a zero in there.
Well, okay, on his report.
On my report, it's seven thousand fifty.
Seven thousand fifty-seven and fifty cents.
Yep.
There you go. And on our resolution, so.
So there should be fifty cents on there?
It should be seven thousand fifty-seven fifty.
Oh, okay.
Rather than not five hundred.
Okay, in the amount of seven thousand fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Okay, I, yeah, I'm okay.
Okay.
No more discussion.
Any other discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you. Tomorrow is our. Tomorrow is our hopefully final meeting to finish the document for that community policing agreement. It'll be tomorrow in the council chambers here at five-thirty, if any of you want to attend. And then also looking for dates that work for some or majority of the council to be at a signing event. When I set this up, I was looking at April twenty-seventh or May fourth. The church was talked to as a place to hold that, as some community members may not be comfortable coming into City Hall or something, the church was more of a more comfortable place for them to hold something like this. So that's what they recommended, but just kind of looking for feedback on the council, what might work from you or what might work for you guys or ideas?
So the thirteenth at five-thirty then?
That tomorrow, yep, that's tomorrow, and that is to review hopefully the final document.
That's at five-thirty?
That's at five-thirty, so tomorrow at five-thirty, we'll be in here and then looking for a future kind of a special meeting. Didn't want to hold it at a council meeting because they wanted to have kind of a cake and kind of a celebration of this is a good thing for the community. And it'd be hard to do that in a meeting as we, you know, you'd approve it and we'd move on to the next thing, so.
What's the twenty-seventh and Wednesday, Tuesday?
I think they're both Wednesdays.
I didn't bring my phone. They're both Wednesdays, they're both Wednesdays?
And it was just, it kind of got pushed out to the, and it could be later in May, but the church didn't want to allow it to happen before Easter, so.
What time?
Probably five-thirty again. Or we could do, I mean, if it works better, we could do it a little bit later, I think that would be fine too. Either the twenty-seventh or the twenty-fourth, I just have my calendar and said we've been meeting on Wednesday the entire time, but if some other day works, you know, for the council better.
Yeah, on my calendar, I have a meeting on the twenty-seventh.
What's your meeting on the twenty-seventh? That could be the, oh, I bet that's the agreement.
I bet you probably wrote it down as a tentative date.
Yeah.
So yeah, so if that, if that's the only one you have on there, that would work.
Okay.
Does the twenty-seventh work for everyone?
Works for me.
Five-thirty?
What?
Is it twenty-seventh then? I'll be out of town.
You'll be out of town.
Well, I won't, I won't be able to make it.
Sure, after the twenty-seventh?
You've been to some of the meetings, do you want to have it on May fourth?
I think you probably wrote that down as a tentative date for, this is a safe.
Yeah.
I'm assuming that's the only police meeting I know of, so.
Councilmember Schmitz has been at some of those meetings, so maybe the May fourth so that he can attend.
That works too.
Yeah, works for me too.
All right, so back to the fourth.
Cross off the twenty-seventh. Don't go anywhere. For those of you that might have taken care of the cap, I have already got the form notice in case three or. Okay, so, well, there's a form.
If the fourth works for everybody, we'll probably put some advertising out. The group we've been working with has been good with like Facebook advertisement, that kind of stuff, so we'll get some flyers, some Facebook stuff and then try and advertise this past weekend to the community members.
You said St. Boniface, right?
That's tentatively, as long as that day works for that group, you know, the group and the church, I'll confirm with you guys to make sure that it's good to go, I just wanted to have just a couple of things to make sure it works for you guys. One other thing, unless there's more questions on that. We had a handful of burglaries that occurred over the weekend, between Cambridge and businesses that were broke into. We're working, it's an active case right now, we're working on suspects and that type of thing, trying to gather information, so it's happening in other communities, um, in types of businesses. And it's happening in like the western town and at other locations. So again, if anybody sees anything suspicious, we'll be contacting neighbors and businesses to see if we can gather any information, but if there's anything that looks out of place at any point in time for anybody watching out there. But here's twenty-four seven, make sure you call us, we can check it all real time, that's the best thing for us. And the only thing, the only thing we had was, thank you, Shannon.
Mike.
I hope season over.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Number eleven, city administrator report.
We, the project committee went and removed some concessions and elaboration. But actually, I mean, it was. The city has not sought a location. Our location is available, we all know that, so it was possible that maybe we should put together a group of members of the construction committee. So Kramer have long time to participate, we need to go, we go straight to the landowner, he wanted it available and try to look for, the city has kind of been. Considered site for the.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against?
When do you want to? Probably hold the interviews, do you want me to advertise and have them? Our first meeting is May eighth tenth, we will have the bond probably that night.
But that shouldn't take.
That shouldn't take too long. We do have the auditor coming that night to do. Or do you want a special meeting to interview and make that decision? Interview and then have a discussion after the interview and then make a decision at the following one, so we could do it. We could have applications due April twenty-eighth, we could meet May fourth at. If you're all available at. Yeah, that, I mean, I was thinking we could review however many, starting at like three, we would probably be done by five-thirty and then by May tenth, you can make a decision. Or do you want to push it out to the May twenty-fourth or hold a special meeting at the time of the middle of May? Would you want the, maybe the interviews before the twenty-fourth and then after twenty-fourth?
Yes.
Maybe sometime the week of the sixteenth through the twentieth interview? No, if I would put it in, it would probably be advertised starting next Tuesday and I could do three weeks worth, so the nineteenth, twenty-sixth, and May second. Then you'd get the applications on May tenth and we could interview maybe. Sometime the week of the sixteenth through the twentieth, then make a decision at the twenty-fourth, does that work? So we'll figure out the application date and then the next meeting, we can set the date of the interview at the April twenty-sixth meeting, does that work for everyone?
That'll work.
Okay. So I'll have them, I'll have them due May fourth, so then I can send them as a packet to you to read before the May tenth meeting, just so you know who they are and then we'll interview the following meeting and decide the next one. Okay. I know not everyone gets paper. Yep. And we had community showcase this last week and ran the video, so I'll be posting that on the face- on our website and on the Facebook page for people to see those videos that we had from Binoit. And otherwise, I think we had a good, it was a decent turnout for coming out of a pandemic, a two-year pandemic for.
Yeah.
We've had more.
Oh, yeah.
Before, but it was pretty good. And with that, that's it.
All right, anything for Bridget? Otherwise, we'll go on to number twelve. List of bills and additions, recommendation to review and accept payment of the accounts payable according to the list and supplemental list presented by city staff, I need a motion on that. Doug makes a motion, how about a second? Shannon seconds it, any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Number thirteen, general questions and comments from city council. Brand.
I have nothing.
Doug?
Nothing. I have one thing, and I don't know where it fits in here, but. And I don't know who owns the property, but on west of Rid- Fifth Avenue, west of the brewery, by the crick. There is, between the crick and that little walking bridge, there is a, I won't say a ton, but there, I quit counting at a hundred. There's more than a hundred beer cans in there, and I don't know if that's school property or if that's brewery property or. Yeah, maybe some enterprising kid could make a couple of bucks by picking them up, I mean, that would be the simple solution, but.
I'll let the school know.
Yeah, that's good. That's all I have.
Shannon? I had something, but I think I'm going to wait and discuss it with you some more, so. And we'll, I'll probably bring it up at the next meeting. But the only other thing I had was, it's my parents' sixty-first, that first anniversary, I want to wish them a happy anniversary.
Congratulations. That's amazing, happy anniversary.
Okay. Uh, number fourteen, motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Shannon makes a motion, how about a second? Doug seconds it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries, thank you very much.